It's Wednesday, August 26th, and this is a study session for the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners. I appreciate everyone who is joining us online, and today's study session is about the Child Advocacy Center. This is for information and discussion purposes only, and so I'll turn it over to Sarah to introduce our our guests.
Actually, I'll turn it right over to Jill.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and thank you for this opportunity to talk about the Child Advocacy Center. With, oh, sorry. Thanks for this opportunity to talk about the Child Advocacy Center. We have a great group of stakeholders arranged today to talk about, give some background on how the system currently works to serve children, vulnerable children and families in Douglas County, and how the proposed Child Advocacy Center will enhance the way vulnerable children and families are served in Douglas County. So as I said, we thought it would be best to give you a sense of what the landscape looks like today, how the system works, so to speak, to give you a good baseline understanding. And so to do that, we're going to ask our stakeholders from the different agencies that are represented on the call today. So we have the kind of the founding stakeholder members of the Douglas County CAC. So that includes the fearless Becky Price from Ballard Center, Dr. Jennifer Hansen, who you'll hear from here in a minute from Children's Mercy Hospital. She's a member of the CAC, but she's also kind of a subject matter expert in this area because she's working for Children's Mercy Hospital. And then we have our partners from law enforcement. And so Adam Heffley and Hayden Fowler with Lawrence Public, Lawrence Police Department are here today. But I do want to caveat that while they're the largest law enforcement agency kind of in this mix, we want to acknowledge that the CAC has also engaged all of the law enforcement partners in Douglas County. So Sheriff's Office, Udora, Baldwin, they have engaged them in their stakeholder groups so far. But LPD is here to kind of talk about how they interact with that. And then we have Pam Wiegand from Douglas County Criminal Justice Services, and Charles Branson is here from Douglas County District Attorney's Office. And then we have Jackie Zenson and Megan Rubio from Douglas, excuse me, from Department of Children and Family Services, who lead up these services here in the community. So I want to start with law enforcement and let LPD lead off the conversation and what their role looks like.
Captain Hayden Fowler with Investigations Division, Lawrence. Afternoon Commissioners. Can you all hear me okay? Outstanding. So the role of LPD and law enforcement in general in relation to child crimes, we get those calls typically two ways. One through a patrol call for service, where somebody is called in to dispatch. We've been dispatched out through the patrol, patrol contacts investigations supervision. Second way would be through DCF intake forms. That's through email contact on either same day or third day or contacts for our request for investigation. Once we're contacted at the supervisor level, the sergeant investigations will make a determination on whether that case is going to be assigned out. Typically, when it's an intake or call for service, it is going to be assigned out to a juvenile investigator, sometimes a detective within Investigations Division. They'll reach out to the reporting party first typically, get information on what the allegations are. At some point, the child that's involved is going to have a forensic interview. Typically, that's going to be done by the assigned detective or investigator. Sometimes we'll ask DCF to assist with those investigations and those interviews of the children. From that point, the detective or investigator is going to do their investigation. They're going to talk to witnesses. They're going to talk to family members. They're going to eventually lead to a conversation with a suspect. If the same kit is needed, typically we'll take the child up or follow the parents up with the child. We typically go to Children's Mercy Hospital, but also have the ability to go to Topeka with the children so they can get the same kit done if necessary. Oftentimes, a child will start at LMH, then be transferred up to Children's Mercy Hospital. But in the end, if that same kit's necessary, we'll go and we'll be there just as a support mechanism to catch any other comments or disclosures that are made by the child, talk with the parents and help them through that process. And then, once that process is finished, we collect the evidence. If there seems to be processed, we'll get outright search warrants if needed, get consent if needed, and process any evidentiary items, collect video if there is such thing, process phones and other evidence of the technological kind of side of things. Once the investigation is completed, the detectives investigators will complete all reports. They'll complete an affidavit if probable cause is deemed, or meet with the district attorney to make a determination if an affidavit is requested. And then we turn that over to the district attorney at that point. And our role typically is finished to a degree at that point, but our investigators are passionate about their investigations. They like to stay in touch with the families and with the victims throughout the court process and be there as a support mechanism as needed for those victims and their families.
Any questions for LPD at this point? Okay. Let's move on to the DCF.
Hi there. I'm Jackie Zenson. I'm with the Department for Children and Families. We cover all of Douglas County, which includes Lawrence, Baldwin, Udora. And then we work also on forensic sexual abuse investigations with Douglas County Sheriff's Office. Us to receive an intake, a reporter would call in through the Protection Reporting Center. That then gets screened to see if the concerns, the allegations, meet the state's definition of that type of abuse. The PRC then assigns that intake to the local office, and that would be where the child resides. PRC may also, in that process, like what Hayden was speaking to a minute ago, they will contact law enforcement in that jurisdiction while they're screening it to see if they are aware of the allegations or if they want to be involved right up front. So then it is assigned to a worker who is child first trained to do the forensic interviews. We contact law enforcement ourselves if we feel like it may be necessary to have them involved with us or assist with us. DCF by policy does interfamilial, so relatives. So we then also can participate in an investigation with third-party perpetrators with law enforcement. From there, we make a finding, refer to services with the family. And like Hayden was saying, we also keep in touch with the family as the process is going.
Thanks, Jackie. Okay, at this point, I'm going to pass it to the district attorney.
Thank you. So after the investigation is done, no matter who it's done by, typically investigations are going to come through us through law enforcement agencies if it's going to be any type of criminal case. A case could come through to us as a child needed care case. Then that case may come through us as a straight DCF referral, but really just depends on what attitude the case takes when it's headed for us. So after we get the case, we will review the case, go through all the reports, anything else that comes in with it, consult with the investigating detectives or staff from DCF, make a decision on which direction the case is going to go from there. That may also involve follow-up interviews or interviews with any of the doctors, personnel, or anything like that that may also be involved in the case to get a better understanding of what the facts and circumstances of the case are. That's typically what's going to happen after that. If we make a charging decision, if it's criminal, then affidavit and complaints filed with the district court for the criminal process to start. If we make a decision that's going to go through some type of child needed care route, then petition is filed then with the district court judge for usually some type of protective orders and to get the case started that way.
And then I want to let Dr. Hansen round this out. And the role of Children's Mercy or the medical provider could have happened at previous steps along here. But what I'd like, Dr. Hansen is going to talk about the role of the medical provider, specifically Children's Mercy or any other medical provider in this scenario, and then lead into how the system that they're proposing for the Child Advocacy Center can enhance how things go today. So, Dr. Hansen, I'll hand it off to you.
Thanks. So I'm Jennifer Hansen. I'm a child abuse pediatrician at Children's Mercy, and I work with the scan team up there, which is the Child Abuse Pediatrics Team at Children's Mercy at both our Kansas and Missouri locations. So sometimes medical is the sort of point of entry for these cases. So sometimes they present to the hospital, and then we make the reports to law enforcement and DCF. Sometimes they're referred to us by law enforcement or DCF or primary care providers or other people. So in Lawrence locally, children who are 14 years or older can be seen at LMH for a sexual assault kit in the acute phase. So meaning if they present within three days of their sexual assault, they're evaluated there locally at Lawrence Memorial, and they get their kit performed there. If they present or make their disclosure outside of that three-day window or if they're younger than 14, there aren't currently any local options for them to receive specialized medical care. And so those kids then are typically referred to us as sort of the closest available option. Our role is to perform a medical screening exam. So we're looking for injuries. We're looking for infections. When kids present acutely within those first three to five days, we'll collect evidence that will be sent to the crime labs. And then we interpret the medical significance of those things and give a medical diagnosis as it pertains to abuse or neglect. We are also available then to testify either in sync cases or in criminal cases regarding the medical findings and our diagnoses and things like that. So like I said, we can be involved sort of anywhere in this process, either from the beginning or referred after things have started. So Jill, do you want me to just sort of keep going here, or should I see? Okay. So when we talk about a CAC and what it will add or enhance and how that will happen, I want to back up just a little bit to provide just a little bit of general information about a CAC. And so it sort of adds two processes to integrate the existing services within the community. The first is MDT or the multi-disciplinary team collaboration. So part of the CAC model is getting all of the members who investigate and are involved in child abuse investigation processes. So DCF, law enforcement, mental health providers, medical providers, the attorneys, all together in the same place so that we can improve information sharing amongst us. We all sort of work within the confines of our own roles and our own positions, which can make things a little bit difficult. But the MDT model allows us to communicate in a more open way so that we can share that information in a better way early on in the investigation process. This improves the coordination of our responses. It also allows a system of evaluation of the processes within our community so that we can continue to assess what do we need, what are we doing really well, and what are some things that we can change to improve or enhance or better coordinate services. All of these things overall lead to improved decision-making by the team. So the second thing that the CAC adds is advocacy services for a child and family from the very beginning. So right now, as we sort of heard, there are certainly advocacy services being provided to kids and families and good services, but they're sort of done by individual places, and some of it is being duplicated. Some of it is perhaps not being done in a way that actually gets a family where they need to be done just due to the way our system is set up. Sometimes it's lack of resources. Sometimes it's family difficulties in navigating the system. But the CAC model provides a dedicated point of contact for a family to a person who is not part of law enforcement. They're not part of DCF. They're not a medical provider. They don't have any other interest in the process except for advocating for the child and family. And so when they are involved at the very beginning of this process, they become the point of contact for the family, and they can explain the process. It can explain why we're referring them to medical care, what that's going to look like, what the medical care will add for them, why we're referring them to therapy, why it's important, why law enforcement or DCF has asked them to do this specific thing, and what it will do for the investigation process. So what we have found, and when I say we, I mean nationally, is that this model is considered best practice in child abuse evaluations. And when it is used, we have improved cooperation from families and childrens with the investigation process. We have better connection to services for families and children. They're more likely to make it to a medical exam. They're more likely to engage in therapy services. And overall, we have improved child protection outcomes, and we have decreased costs across the board for child abuse investigations because of this coordination of services and integration of services from the beginning and throughout the investigation. So CACs can look a little bit different depending on what the needs are in the community and what resources are available. So I think you guys should have gotten some handouts where I went through some of this stuff. But just to sort of briefly go over it, some CACs are standalone centers that have lots of available and integrated things. They have mental health on site. Some of them have like court advocacy on site. Some of them have law enforcement on site, sort of co-located in the same place. Some CACs are co-located with other advocacy services like CASA or others in their community. Some of them have dedicated staff interviewers, forensic interviewers, as Child Advocacy Center staff. That model allows for law enforcement and DCF and the district attorney to all sort of observe in real time and provide feedback rather than be part of the interview process. They are able to sort of be involved in a different way. And then other CACs are set up so that law enforcement and DCF do the interviews, much like Jackie and law enforcement have described doing in Lawrence, but with the addition of the family advocate at the same time. So that when law enforcement or DCF are doing their interview with the child, the Child Advocacy Center advocate is meeting with the family and explaining the next steps of the process and is helping them make appointments for their medical exam or for their therapy service or whatever else they need. I've also included in the information that you guys got some specific information about child advocacy centers in Kansas and some statistics about Douglas County. I can really briefly go through that. Specifically, the part about children receiving those specialized medical services in Douglas County. Because Children's Mercy is the place that we should be seeing these kids, I looked through our statistics and I looked back through our patient information. And we really don't see as many kids from Douglas County as we should based on statistics from DCF and things like that. Now, I know, and I've certainly been a part of evaluations of kids where Lawrence PD has driven them all the way to Kansas City for us to see them. Douglas County Sheriff's Department has done the same thing. But when we look at the numbers of kids, we're not seeing enough of them, and the services don't exist locally, which tells us that kids aren't getting the specialized medical care that they need. I compared that to Leavenworth County, and I just chose Leavenworth because they do have a Child Advocacy Center. But distance-wise, they're a similar distance from Children's Mercy as Lawrence is. And of, based on statistics, again, I don't know exact numbers from DCF, but based on statistics, they refer to more than half, so like 55 or 56% of their child sexual abuse cases to Children's Mercy to be seen. We saw more than half of those cases. And compared to Douglas County, we saw about 15%, again, based on statistics, so not actual numbers. But there was a big difference there. And I think that difference comes down to the advocacy services for the Child Advocacy Center and that person who's the dedicated person that describes to the family over and over the importance of why they need to do these next things, what they will get from it, why it's an important thing for a kid to have. And then the last thing I want to talk about, I think, is the opportunity for improving medical services locally because I do know that distance is a barrier. A Child Advocacy Center and Children's Mercy, we can work together to provide some transportation options. We give gas cards to families all the time. We can provide and coordinate existing transportation services frequently. But it's still a barrier. They still have to get in their car and drive 45 minutes and coordinate like a whole afternoon or whatever to come do this. It's not the same as going to their local pediatrician's office, and I recognize that. So there are some opportunities for us to be creative and to work with local medical providers and coordinate some specialized care being available here in the community. It takes a lot of steps. So some of our local sexual assault nurses, we've met with them, and there is some interest in them becoming pediatric-trained. That requires some commitment and some support from Lawrence Memorial Hospital, which they may have. But it's also a pretty significant time commitment for the nurse to become trained. And then she requires a certain number of cases to be proffered or mentored until she can establish that she is capable of doing them independently. And then in child sexual abuse cases, there is a medical standard for peer review with a content expert. So that would be us. But we have set this up in other communities. We do this in St. Joseph, Missouri. And we are working on this with an area down in southeast Kansas right now. So there are some options for this. It just takes a lot of coordination and planning. But this is still in our long-term plan to really look at improving access to medical care for kids there locally. But we can also improve, in the meantime, getting kids to the service with us using the CAC and pooling resources together in that way. The last thing, it's also on your information that I gave you. Funding for CACs is primarily through federal and state grant funding, but also particularly early on, it's very common for CACs to have support more locally through county and city funding and contracts. And so I would just like to plug here that county funding is going to be really important for us to get going on this. So we've done, we've made a lot of progress and put in a lot of hours and a lot of work into this to get where we are now and really are at the place where our next step is hiring a dedicated executive director for the CAC to take over some of the additional, applying for additional grants and coordination of the MDT, starting advocacy services and things like that as we continue to move forward. We have our first MDT meeting set for tomorrow morning, so I'm super excited about that. And I've heard lots of good feedback from the MDT that they're all really excited to take the next steps and move forward here. So I think Jill said our next step would be to see what kind of questions or additional information you guys might want.
Yeah, and I don't know if this is a thing for you to cover, Dr. Hansen, or for Becky to cover, but if you could, I think it'd be helpful to understand how much funding you've put together for this project so far and how the county funding will round that out and what the plan looks like moving into the future.
Sure. So I can talk a little bit about that. So there are lots of dedicated sort of funding and grant sources for child advocacy centers, but we don't qualify for that funding right now because they are for existing and established CACs. So once we move to the next step and we have hired employees, we will be eligible for additional funding next year that we're not eligible for now. We submitted an application through the governor's office for VOKA funding this year that will help support a family advocate position and part of an executive director salary. But the grant stipulations will not completely fund an executive director position because we're not looking at this point to have a freestanding or dedicated facility for this. We're just needing office space. And so we've talked about some options for that, including Commissioner Kelly's thoughts about the Old United Way building. And so we are certainly open for that. But we're also planning on applying through the city for city funding once that petition is available, and we have some other grant options that we're looking at as well. But we don't have anything that has been granted yet. VOKA funding awards will be announced in October, I believe. And so we're kind of at a place where we're waiting.
So then I guess I'm going to, this is Sarah, I'm going to ask a real basic question then. So who would the, if you were going to hire somebody, who would they be an employee? Are you incorporated or has that, I mean, maybe we should go back to some of those basics.
Sure. Yes, we are incorporated. We have submitted an application with the IRS for nonprofit status. And so we haven't heard back on that yet, but we are Douglas County Children's Advocacy Center Incorporated.
Doctor.
Do you have a board?
We do have a board. The initial board members are myself and Becky and Wendt and Paula. And tomorrow at our MDT meeting, we will establish who the other members of our board will be from our MDT.
Yeah, and I wanted to recognize that Wendt Winters and Paula Martin have joined as well that are the board members that Dr. Hansen just mentioned.
Doctor.
I just confirm, Sarah, we, because I did the paperwork. We are filed with the Secretary of State. The corporation exists lawfully. We have a board of directors, a conflict of interest policy. All of those things require the 501(c)(3) applications been filed with the IRS. I would expect and hope to hear within a matter of weeks about that. We're ready to open our bank account. We do have the small beginnings of funding. But what we hope the county will approve will be very critical, a kind of priming the pump funding for us to allow us to go to the next step, to qualify, for example, for the other grants that are so important and the other CACs in the state use.
Thanks, Wendt. This is Commissioner Kelly, and this is for Dr. Hansen. You talked about Leavenworth and compared their model to ours. I'm interested if there are other communities that are about the same size as ours and what their models look like.
Sure. So there is not another community in the state of Kansas as large as Lawrence that is not served by a Child Advocacy Center. Lawrence is by far the largest community who has not served. Other areas, I'm trying to think, like, I don't know, who else would be a comparable city? Manhattan, maybe? I don't know. I'm not from Kansas originally, sorry. Manhattan has a CAC. They do have dedicated forensic interviewers on staff there. So frequently what happens when child advocacy centers are first started, they are started in much the way that we are describing or planning our process where we're taking the existing services and just sort of trying to integrate them and enhance them without changing the processes in a super significant way. So frequently, when CACs start, they start in much the way we're talking about where law enforcement and DCF will continue their interviews. They have trained people. They have dedicated facilities to do it. And so that part of this is working really well, and so we don't see a need to change that. And so there are certainly other Child Advocacy Center models that use this same system and continue to use it over time because that's what fits their community. I do know that in Douglas County, some of the smaller law enforcement jurisdictions like Baldwin and Udora are definitely interested long-term in having forensic interview staff available with the CAC. Maybe not full-time, and maybe they won't do all of the interviews, but having that available would be a big resource for the smaller law enforcement jurisdictions who don't have as many resources or the manpower that Lawrence PD or Douglas County Sheriff's Department have.
And just to follow up, you sort of described what other communities have done. Is there any research on the best way, I mean, are the best practices for starting a CAC? I mean, just because that's the way other Kansas communities have done it. It seems like since there's so many, somebody might have researched the best implementation process.
So I don't know that there is a single process that works better across the board because communities and their available resources are so different. The things that repeatedly are cited as best practice are the MDT model and case review model and the advocacy starting at the beginning. And so those are the two pieces of this that seem to be most important. And the rest of it is sort of tailored, like I said, about around what's available. around what's available and what resources are available in the communities the CACs will be serving.
So I remember, this is Nancy Feldman. I remember in our budget conversations when we talked about setting the forty thousand dollars aside to to give ourselves time to learn a little more about this. One line of conversation that took hold, and I'm not sure it's relevant anymore, but I'd like to hear a little more was we were thinking about a great symbiotic relationship between the CAC and CASA, possibly as an umbrella organization. It sounds like there's really not a need for an umbrella organization because you all are your own organization now. But I guess I'd like to know what role there is for other, for CASA or any, like, what is the relationship of the CAC with other child-related organizations in town? Will this?
So we will be coordinated with them. We just had a call actually earlier today with Chrissy from the Care Center talking about ways that we can coordinate and integrate our services. CASA is the same. CASA has been aware and involved in all of these planning stages and is super supportive of it. Eric Vaughn is the director of CASA, and so he's been part of these conversations as well. So again, I think that this is, the CAC would sort of be the the, I guess, the hub, I guess, if you will, that sort of integrates all of these different services together. Because what I think is challenging to both professionals in the community and families is that there are so many different points of entry. And so if we can coordinate this so that families can be connected to whatever services they need, but they can enter into a single, there's a single point of entry to make this easier through the CAC and that family advocate and the advocacy roles there to connect them to the different services, I think that that would be a way to integrate our services. CASA is certainly involved, but they're not involved until cases are referred to court, and so that's further down in the investigation process. Likewise, the Care Center is involved, but only when children make it to therapy services. So all of the different community child and family-serving organizations are involved at different points in time along the child abuse investigation. And so this, again, would be a place to start and coordinate all of those downstream services.
Thanks. That's really helpful. Thanks so much. My only other real question is, this is, this conversation has been going on for quite a while, and I know it started with a kind of a small group of citizen advocates. I know Becky and Paula Martin and Wendt. I don't know if there were other citizens behind the scenes advocating for this and kind of creating those first conversations. I know Jill stepped in along the way and the circles of conversations broadened. And I guess I want to know how those conversations are going now. Is everyone, does it feel like everyone's on the same page and all ready to go in the same direction? Does it feel like there's any more work to do, or is this the moment where you all are gonna say you're ready to go? And I'd love to hear from those citizens who kind of got the ball rolling.
You guys want to take this?
Well, I would say that we have the support of every member of the MDT that is involved in MDTs, and we're getting together tomorrow morning for our first meeting. We have a memorandum of understanding that has been approved by all of the members of the MDT. And we're ready to go. Wendt?
Yeah, I would say, Commissioner, that we're ready for the action stage. We're ready to roll this out onto the field. It's been an elongated process because of COVID. But we really, we started this months and months ago, back last year. And there's a lot, as you've heard from the beginning, there's a lot of what we do here in Douglas County that's really well done. There really isn't a need to bring, for example, the Sheriff's Office, LPD, together with DCF. You've heard from them, they're doing a very good job. What there is a need to do is to bring the other disparate members, all the support agencies from LMH, Burt Nash, to CASA, Trauma and Sexual Assault Care Center, et cetera, et cetera. Everybody needs to be around the table. And I think the critical piece is that we're done really talking and negotiating the terms of the MDT and who ought to be involved. And I think everybody that is a part of the MDT is convinced that this has great opportunity to enhance protection for children. The other, last thing I'd say is, the name really speaks for itself. Let's not forget this is a child advocacy center. And this is focused on, as Dr. Hanson said, the children and the non-offending adults. They're the ones who really need to be sure that they have an advocate from the beginning, all the way through this sometimes very scary and disjointed process. So I think, as I said before, I think this funding from the county will allow us to prime this pump and have the first staff so we can really get going, including, obviously, applying for and we think will be successful with all these other grants.
And is, about the funding and the grants, if the grants are received that you would expect to receive, then does that make this forty thousand dollars one-time funding, or is there still an expectation of some annual a need for annual support from the county, or is it just too early to know?
Well, this is Wendt. I would like to say, and of course you would like to hear our promise never to come back and ask for any more money any other time, that this is purely one-time funding. I will just reiterate that this forty thousand dollars is critical for us to be able to jumpstart to the next level and to be able to apply for and have qualifications to receive other funding. We would obviously hope that this time next year, there will be lots of funding available from these other sources that most of the other CACs around the state rely on, and you have our pledge to work very hard to that. But I must also say that I'm sure that if we feel there's a compelling need to request again forty thousand dollars, we'll come back. But we know we'll need to prove that to the commission to be deserving.
Forty thousand dollars that we're asking for will allow us to hire at least a part-time director, and that director then can pursue other funding sources, including other grants that eventually we will qualify for once we are funded and up and running. And so this initial forty thousand dollars is important to get us to the next step for the ability to go after other funding. Jim, I think you started to add something to that.
I was just gonna say that most CACs are primarily funded through federal and state grant sources, with only a small portion of their budgets coming from more local funding, like county or city. I don't anticipate that we would be any different from that, but I would just echo Wendt's statements that it's sort of critical as our startup, as we start this up, because we aren't eligible for as much funding this year as we will have the potential for next year.
A couple of questions on, so I think some of the questions about incorporation were less somewhat about just structure, but also some of the conversation we had at Budget, sometimes when a new agency is starting, partnership for just even back-office function is helpful to have with another organization, like so that your part-time executive director is not spending all of their time processing your own payroll. You know, I think, you know, is there some potential ways to incubate this that provides support for this person so that we can get some, you know, so there can be some value, you know, community-facing value for it, but if the person's spending all their time simply just doing the startup. So I think, and then I guess I want to also ask about governance. So generally, you said you've got three people on your board now, correct?
We actually have five. And after tomorrow's meeting, we've said in the memorandum of understanding that every member of the MDT has the opportunity, if they wish, to appoint someone to the board that represents their agency. And so we needed the first five for Wendt to file for our incorporation, which is his firm did that pro bono for us, and thank you, Wendt, for that. So we started with the five, and four of us were the four of us have been involved from the very beginning and very actively involved. But going forward, the other members of the MDT have an opportunity to add a representative or a board member to that board. So we hope to accomplish that tomorrow.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I'm sorry, my computer's restarting, so you can hear me, but you cannot see me on Zoom right now. Hopefully you can hear me. So I guess my question's more about related to governance for the commission. Generally, when they are the primary funder of an organization, they have representation or there's a, we would have to form some sort of agreement between the county and the CAC to make sure that outcomes and deliverables were met in terms of progress. So, you know, these are just some of the things that happen when you have a startup organization and how you fund that, and then so I guess I'd want to talk through a little bit about how that would work. Would the Board of County Commissioners have an appointee to the group? What happens if, you know, if progress isn't made, you know, and I apologize, you know, as the administrator, I sort of have to ask the kind of what happens if type questions in terms of if things aren't successful in terms of that regard, but I guess that when I talk about governance, that's kind of some of the things I'm more curious about.
Yeah, let me take that, and then Jan and Paula can follow up. That, we perfectly understand and appreciate the need for accountability as a startup process. And I'll point out a couple of things. Number one, we have, we do have an affiliation relationship right now with the Ballard Center. The Ballard Center is acting as our, quote, fiscal agent. They've accepted donations, keeping that separate, of course. But as we talked with the MDT members, it became pretty clear that the, what everybody wanted was not to have this organization be sort of captive or affiliate with any other existing agency, but rather to provide the wraparound sources. So we made the decision to become an independent body with governance provided by all of the players, LPD, sheriff, a DA, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So that's how we arrived at the decision to be freestanding and not to be a subsidiary of CASA or subsidiary of Ballard. Secondly, I would tell you, we would be delighted to have a representative of the county on the Board of Directors. We have no swearing-in process. We have no money process. You all tell us who you nominate or want us to appoint, and we'll be delighted to have that help. And finally, I'd say that whatever kind of accounting processes, other accountability processes you find appropriate, we're ready, willing, and able to meet them. We know that with the initial funding comes some greater responsibility and accountability, and we're very well-prepared for that and looking forward to meeting your meeting and exceeding your requirements for us in that regard.
I would also add that in our VOKA grant application for that federal funding through the governor's office, we did have to detail some very specific metrics that, and measurable things that we would hope to meet over the next year using the grant money that would come from them. And so we described things like a percentage of kids who would receive advocacy services and a percentage who would be referred for mental health and for medical services when applicable. And so in terms of measuring outcomes and things like that, we do have some specific things set out already. If there are other things that the commission would be interested in, we can discuss that as well.
Dr. Hanson, could you, I don't think we had it in the materials, but could you just remind us, who are the members of the MDT?
Sure, so typically the MDT is made up of the primary community members who are involved in the investigation, the criminal justice system, child protection system, and then the additional services, so medical, mental health. So typically, an MDT is made up of DCF, law enforcement, and this would be all of the law enforcement agencies that would interact with the CAC. So for now, this is all of the law enforcement agencies for Douglas County. The district attorney's office, typically someone, if there are different people who are involved in sink cases and criminal cases. Mental health service providers, so here we've engaged with Burt Nash and with the Care Center for that. Medical providers, so I will be there to represent Children's Mercy. We also have Corey Green from Lawrence Memorial, who will represent their their team there. Sometimes there are also additional members of like school agencies. Sometimes schools will send counselors, particularly if there are a large number of kids from a certain school district or something like that to just provide additional information to the MDT. But typically, it's law enforcement, DCF, courts, medical, and mental health. And the child advocacy.
And Dr. Hanson, could you share those, the statistics and outcomes that you shared with the state for those voca, could you forward that to the county as well?
Sure.
Thank you.
And since we're talking about metrics, this is Commissioner Kelly. You've gotten to my passion. And my question is, I'm embarrassed to say I don't know the metrics from a race standpoint or a gender standpoint when it comes to child abuse. And I'm gonna double-load my question. If you could share that, and then what this group is doing to address equity in your design of the Children's Advocacy Center.
So I can certainly get you statistics on that. Just, you know, off my head as I'm talking here. All children from all backgrounds suffer from abuse. Girls are more likely to be sexually abused than boys. They're also more likely to report sexual abuse than boys are. In terms of the Child Advocacy Center, when we meet with the entire MDT tomorrow, and then in future meetings as we revise our guidelines, child advocacy centers typically have very specific language in their guidelines that talk about addressing sort of these inequities and making sure that all people are able to have the same services when they come. So that will be part of the guidelines. In terms of, I can't remember if it was you or if it was someone just before you that was asking this, I apologize, community outreach. So I know that there are organizations in the community that are already doing some of this education, both in schools and in the community. And CACs typically partner with that to increase and improve education to reach broader audiences or more audiences. And so again, I know the Care Center has some curriculum that's done in elementary schools that we would partner with them. CASA does some things like that that we have already discussed partnering with to improve sort of education and outreach as sort of a preventive measure as well.
I didn't hear you talk about race at all there. Does anybody have any of those statistics or a way to make sure that we're not creating barriers to these services?
So again, I think that the way that the CAC is set up, this would be all children who have a forensic interview at the Child Advocacy Center would be eligible for services. And so there that part of it, there wouldn't be any sort of racial inequity in terms of all comers are eligible for services. In terms of reporting and child abuse across the board, there are some differences nationally with race. I don't have our local statistics handy to know that, but nationally, there are some differences both in rates of abuse, types of abuse, and how frequently abuse is reported. So for example, people of Hispanic backgrounds are less likely to report abuse to authorities and are more likely to want to handle it internally, and it's a cultural thing that's been reported across the country. I think that I think that in terms of addressing some of those differences, community education is always one of the go-to things to do. I don't, like I said, I don't have our local statistics handy, but certainly that's something that we can address as we move forward, getting those statistics and seeing if there's a certain demographic that we should be targeting or making sure that we are specifically making efforts to reach.
If I can add something, we talked with Chrissy Heikala at length about the services that the Care Center offers, and they have a program in the grade schools, kindergarten through third grade, for education about appropriate touching and inappropriate touching. And by partnering with them and by getting those services together, hopefully, kids of all backgrounds and all races, they're all hearing what Chrissy and her, the Care Center are educating them about. And hopefully, no matter what the family dynamics are, there are school counselors that those kids would feel comfortable reporting to, that would then draw them into the services that a CAC could offer. And so that's an important partnership and a way to reach more kids of all backgrounds.
Well, and I don't know if this is an opportunity, I don't know if Jackie or Megan, if you, if DCF has any statistics that are related to what Commissioner Kelly's talking about that could be helpful.
I don't have any statistics offhand, but it's something that I can see if we can pull on a state level.
That'd be helpful, yeah.
I'll just add, Commissioner Kelly, that, of course, with recent events, all of us are becoming more aware of the need to be more assertive and more outreach to make sure that we are inclusive and not leaving any racial or other demographic group behind. I think one of the strengths of the very essence of the Child Advocacy Center is that we are a center, and that is we're made up of many, many different entities. The MDT, the MOU has space for 12 different members, and Jen described that. But we've met, for example, with The Willow about what do they see in terms of the need for advocacy service for children that they see. And Sexual Abuse Trauma Center, Chrissy, and on and on and on. And we think that just that very model is going to help make, make us all more aware of providing equality and services to all, all groups in our society. But we are, of course, open to all other ways that, that any of us know to bring more services to all these groups.
Another question now, Sarah, can you sort of walk us through next steps? We don't make decisions at our study sessions. We did talk about this in our budget.
Well, I mean, what I would say is that the commission heard this as a proposal for the 2021 budget process. So and the county is on a fiscal year, a calendar fiscal year, which means the funds would not be available until January. And generally, it would take an action of the commission then to decide to go ahead and fund that request. It sounds like we've asked for some additional information here that would, should be provided. I think, you know, and we can follow up with Jill to get some additional kind of outlines in terms of sort of what your bylaws are for your governance structure, just some of the paperwork in terms of the structure. And I think all of that will help us feel, I think, a little bit more, have some good preparation works for that leading up to January to win to the 2021 budget. So I would say it'd have to come back before the commission for a formal vote. There's not a significant rush on our end, just because the funds would not be available until next year.
I guess I, I guess I'd like to just have recognized, though, that there, I mean, a little more homework to do, but I think that, I think it's, what I'm hearing is that there's, urgency might be the wrong word, but there's a sense of being ready to go, and some things can't get done until there's some funding in place. And so I guess I'm, I guess I'd want to honor the spirit of this group's work in terms of, you know, not, not, not delay, not delaying a decision, not delaying funding, if that delay will actually cause them to lose the opportunity for larger grants, or if there are deadlines that might be missed if they can't get going sooner rather than later. I guess I'd want to know whether working on our fiscal schedule is going to put them at any particular disadvantage in terms of getting this going.
I mean, and I think that's certainly something, it doesn't appear necessarily, but I do think that's something we can certainly be cognizant of. I still also feel like, you know, we would need to make sure that we had sort of all the, in essence, paperwork of this entity and organizational structure, if the commission does want to have an appointee or make sure that there's appointees to that process. Generally, those kinds of things are done before we issue payment, which would, so I think we can continue to work at all good speed to make it happen, but it, you know, I do think that there probably are a few kind of paperwork administrative items that would need to be taken care of before funds could be released anyway.
And we talked about the, the funding timeline with the group when we planned this conversation. So the, if I recall, and folks, folks, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, getting the funding shortly after the new year didn't, didn't, wasn't a barrier or a concern to anybody, I didn't hear.
That's correct.
Well, I would add that we certainly would appreciate any, any funding whenever it's available. We're certainly prepared and understand that it might not be until January of next year. I would say, though, that if the decision could make, if the commission could make a decision on the funding sooner rather than later, that would help us. For example, if we knew in September that the commission approved this, subject to these conditions, and of course, availability not being until January or so, that would help us. It's likely we could leverage that news with advancing some of our other work. So I would ask that, to the extent that it fits within your schedule and your calendar and your workload, having a decision sooner rather than toward the end of the year would be best for us.
I think that's certainly fine. Obviously, we wouldn't want to put it off to the, to the very last minute, anyway. But I, yeah, I think we could maybe just come up with a list of deliverables that we, you know, just to make sure that we all have the information. And that would be a really good packet for then a commission consideration decision and make sure that we have all those things lined up. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm happy to coordinate that.
Yeah, we could certainly put that on a future agenda and in time that you could get us all of that information as well. You know, if you're, if you're reaching out tomorrow to the MDT to ask them to join, you know, my assumption is you're creating bylaws for your governance, you know, if, if the, you know, if we want to, if, if there's representation from the county as a part of that, how does that work? Who is that? I'm assuming there'll be some conversations of that regard. Generally, that takes a little bit of time to get worked out and have bylaws approved and then just other structure stuff, you know, your federal tax ID, reporting number, some of those types of things that all have to be done in terms of an agreement as well.
By the way, I assure you that all of that is done. Our FEIN is done, bylaws are done, articles of corporation, et cetera. Those are all done and readily available, and we'll send them over as soon as you ask us to. And, and also, by the way, let me make clear, all of the members of the MDT have signed the MOU. So the city of Lawrence, for example, the sheriff's office, and all the way down through DCF, Baldwin Police, all of them have, have signed the MOU. And tomorrow is, so tomorrow isn't to convince them to join, it's to actually start the work of the center.
And, and so I'm sorry, Wynn, if I have that wrong, then I guess my assumption is, is if that's your governance council, or, or, though, that was, those are the bylaws I was talking about in terms of who's on, who's, who's in charge of the governance, if they're, if you've already done that, and then if the county is going to be a part of that, would that need to be changed?
Yeah, well, the governance technically, of course, is a board of directors, and we have five people, and tomorrow we'll start to add more. And as I said, we welcome any representative of the county, and we'll just automatically add, add them. And so that's one, the most direct legal governance structure is the Board of Directors, of course. And then layered on that is the MDT, the multidisciplinary team, which are really the folks that deal with this day in and day out. Jackie, Adam, Charles's office, et cetera, et cetera. There'll be an additional governance overlay of those MDT members.
This is Commissioner Kelly, and I appreciate what you're saying, Wynn, and I think what I would just ask is that as we develop a relationship with the county that is attached to this request for funds, that we, we ask Jill to continue to work with you as you develop those things so that we don't lock into anything too quickly and, and we can set it up in a way that honors the, the, the contribution of the county, if that's what the request is. You know, personally, I have some interest in bringing it to the, what I'm called, the Douglas County Human Services Hub and not the former United Way building. You know, to, to bring it to that space is really important to me, because I think it, it really typifies what we're hoping to do there as a collaborative space, as a, as services that are intertwined. You know, I think I'm going to ask for some equity metrics in that as well. So I'm just giving you some examples of some things that may roll into this as you develop it and would encourage you to continue to work with Jill, if that's okay with Sarah, to go ahead and continue to work with Jill as you develop those things. That's just my personal opinion, not speaking for other commissioners.
I have a couple of questions. This is Commissioner Drew. So my questions, I think, are more for Sarah. And I just want to make sure that I understand, so when we approved the budget back on August 12th, there was a placeholder funding in there for the $40,000 for the Children's Advocacy Center. So I guess I'm curious why it would take a separate vote in January to approve those funds.
The vote wouldn't have to come in January, it could come before. Generally, when we place things in contingency funding, we then revisit it and take formal action. This would be a whole new line item in our budget that we don't currently have.
Okay, but it doesn't have to be after the
No, no, no.
Budget year starts.
No, no.
Okay, that was, that was my confusion then.
Yeah, I just need action of the commission.
Okay, so that, that's where I was confused. I think the other thing is, one of the things that I would really like to discuss as we get into this, I know we don't make decisions at the study sessions, but I would like to talk about whether or not they put a county commissioner on their board. Most of the social service agencies that we deal with, we don't have a board member. And so I don't want to make them feel like, you know, to get this funding, you're going to have a board member. So I think that's a discussion that we need to, need to have and not force that upon.
And I wasn't necessarily, well, and I would say it's a real mixed bag. So I wasn't necessarily thinking you would have a commissioner as a representative on the board, but like, you appoint the entire Board of Directors for the Senior Resource Center. So, I mean, number of our agencies, there are commission appointees to boards to represent interests of the commission, to help hold, help hold things accountable, make sure things are moving smoothly. So that was more of what I was trying to, to talk about, not necessarily a county commissioner on the board, but an appointee of the county to serve on the board. And, and we do, we, it's a mixed bag. There's certain, and they're not always on the Board of Directors, per se, but they're on, on some sort of advisory governance council of that board.
So, yeah, that would be a conversation for future, a future meeting. Thank you.
I can say that whatever governance position you all want, we'll, we'll just add it. So we're, we're the startup folks, we're the new kids on the block, and we would be delighted to have a representation from the county.
Well, I, I think we're just about at our time limit, but I just want to thank you all for your hard work in this. This, this represents an awful lot of meetings to get to this meeting and some bumps in the road, but it sounds like everything, almost everything is kind of well, well lined up, and it does sound like it's ready to go with the, just with the addition of a few more crossed Ts and dotted Is from the county's perspective. So my hope would be that we could get this on our agenda sooner rather than later and give you all the assurance that there is money on the way. But obviously, that has to come at a different meeting. But anyway, I'm just so grateful for your work in this and for the collaboration, the kind of ultimately, the coming together, the meeting of the minds and, and the goodwill of this group. I think it's a great service you're doing for, for our kids. So thank you.
And before we leave the meeting, I want to be real clear on what other homework you want us to do and what kind of documents you'd like us to provide.
So what I heard was, we would like to have some, we'd like to have the metrics and the measurements that are included in that VOCA grant that you submitted to the state, as well as any, as a copy of the MOU that you have with the MDT, the MDTs, and any equity measures or indicators of equity that, whether you've looked at as a team or perhaps, I know that Dr. Hanson is, has strong affiliations with the Association of CACs, and maybe there's some measures that they could pull upon, and, and then I think from DCF, if there's any information, statistics that are related to race, that would be helpful to have as well. And the Board of Directors
Yeah, the list of the Board of Directors and then the relationship of the MDT Council to the Board of Directors.
Board of Directors and, I'm sorry, my doorbell rang, so I missed a little of it.
The agencies represented on the MDD, MDT Council and their relationship to the, to governance or to decision-making Board of Directors, those types of things.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for the time today.
Was there other things that the commissioners wanted to, to just to make sure that we got everything?
I just want to keep pushing them to use space that's available through the county, if that's a savings to you all. And if it doesn't work, I understand, but I just want to keep pushing it because I, I think this is the kind of organization that really belongs in that kind of space. So.
I think that's a wonderful idea. I'm excited about that opportunity.
I'm so sorry, I keep, it's so hard. I apologize for interrupting people. If, if we had a more refined budget, since I, from, like, the last time I know you guys all worked on this was back in March, a lot of things have changed in March, you've learned a lot of great information. I just think refined financials, just to, if you have them, I don't, would be helpful in terms of that structure.
Jen, one thing we, we have, I can't make available the entire IRS 501(c)(3) application because the IRS prohibits that, but there's a section in that application that, so I'll, I'll send that, we can hit that. And I, I can say, Commissioner Kelly, that I think you've heard from three, at least three of the five board members, that we would be delighted to be a tenant in the hub. That would be a tremendous support for us. I, I know a little bit about what you all have in mind, which is a very great idea, and we would be delighted to be, to be a tenant there.
Thanks. Glad to hear that, Wynn. Yeah, we're, we really appreciate you all coming and echoing Commissioner Thelman's comments, just all the hard work that's gone into it. And, you know, it's a bit, it's embarrassing to me that we are so far behind so many other Kansas counties on this, and some of the statistics that Dr. Hanson provided show, it just makes a lot of sense to me. So I appreciate you bringing it forward to us and being so thoughtful in your approach and taking Sarah's kind, she's our administrator, this is what we need her to do, taking her This is what we need her to do, taking her kind prodding and, and making sure we've got everything administratively set up. I know you've got great minds working on it as well, so I expect big things out of this.
And one thing I'd add is just to your suggestions about the use of the Human Services Hub is maybe the, the Board of Directors or the MDT can do some brainstorming around facility needs in the, in the short and the long term. And then we can better conceptualize how that space can be used. And then I can work with them to set up a, a time to go see the space and, and all that.
That'd be great. Thank you all. Appreciate it. With that, we will end our study session and we will be back for our general business meeting at 5:30.